Vice Chair Bunch, we are now live. You may begin the meeting.
Thank you, Gwain. I'm now calling the September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty meeting of the ECSU Board of Trustees to order. As Vice Chair on behalf of the Chair, I want to remind everyone that we will be conducting today's meeting pursuant to the new amendments to the Open Meetings Act that apply to states of emergency. The amendments were signed into law earlier and allow for public bodies to meet via electronic means. The new law does require, however, that we take all votes via roll call, which we will do today. Additionally, pursuant to the amendments of the law, all chats, instant messages, texts, or other written communications between members of the board regarding the transaction of the public business during the remote meeting are deemed a public record. Finally, I will ask all committee members, board members, and participating staff to please identify yourself before participating in deliberations, including making motions, proposing amendments, and raising points of order. At this time, I would like to call on Trustee Kim Brown for our invocation.
Good morning to everyone. Let's pray. Gracious God, our Father, we thank you for the ability to assemble ourselves today to conduct business for our great university. We thank you for every gift that is upon the Zoom today, for every academic professional and for those of us who give our time to assist our Chancellor in stewarding this resource that you've given our community, our state, and our region. We ask now that you would bless us this day, that we might reason together. We thank you for the favor that is evident upon our university and our leadership. And as we sit together today, it is our desire that you are pleased and that the university's cause is forward. And we thank you for that now, and we attach the name of Jesus. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
At this time, I'm pleased to welcome the Honorable Judge Yula Reed, who will administer the oath of office to Student Government Association President Jimmy Chambers. Judge Reed?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chambers, if you will take the Bible in your left hand, raise your right and repeat after me. I state your name.
On mute.
Jimmy Chambers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As a member of the Board of Trustees.
As a member of the Board of Trustees.
Of Elizabeth City State University.
Of Elizabeth City State University.
Further, I do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Furtherly, I do solemn-- I'm sorry, say that again?
Further, I do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Furtherly, I do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
The state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
The constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be.
And may be.
Established for the government thereof. Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Chambers.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Judge Reed, for being with us today, and we'll let you get back to court.
Thank you so much for having me.
Oh, thank you for coming. And congratulations to our newest trustee, Trustee Chambers. Let's give him another round of applause. Thank you, Jimmy.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
At this time, I will call on Secretary Stephanie Johnson for the roll call.
Good morning. I'd like to ask our trustees to take your phones off mute, just so we can go through this swiftly. For the record of attendance, Carol Bonds.
Unable to join us this morning.
Phyllis Bosomworth.
Present.
Kim Brown.
Present.
Lynn Bunch.
Present.
Andy Culpepper.
Present.
Jimmy Chambers.
Present.
Christine Evans.
Present.
Stephanie Johnson, present. Jan King Robinson.
She's having some technical difficulties.
Tracy Swain.
Present.
Paul Tynes.
Present.
I'm sorry, Paul Tynes. And Kenneth Wilkins.
Present.
You can put your phones back on mute. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to also call on Trustee Johnson to read our State Government Ethics Act.
The State Government Ethics Act. As Secretary of the Board of Trustees and on behalf of the Chair, this is my responsibility to remind all members of the Board of their duties under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflict of interest and appearances of conflict of interest as required by this act. Each member has received the agenda and related information for this Board of Trustees meeting. If any Board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before this, the Board of Trustees at this meeting, the conflict or appearance of conflicts should be identified at this time.
Hearing none, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes for the June second, two thousand and twenty, and July twenty-ninth, twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty special meetings. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, so moved.
Let me, who made the motion?
I'm sorry, Tracy Swain, so moved.
Thank you. And the second?
And Brown's second.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second one. I have the roll call.
Yes, roll call, vote for the minutes. Trustee Bosomworth?
Yes.
Trustee Brown made the second. The Bunch?
Yes.
Trustee Culpepper?
Yes.
Trustee Chambers?
Yes.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson is still trying to join. Trustee Swain made the motion. Trustee Tynes?
Yes.
And Trustee Wilkins.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll now move on to the consent agenda. We have several items on that. The Professor Emeritus Status, our annual audit plan, the naming of university facilities and units policy, the Rosenwald School and Principal's House renovation, the lease approval for airport space, and the nominating committee report. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Kenneth Wilkins, trustee, so moved.
Okay.
Johnson's second. And now we'll have the roll call.
Okay, roll call, vote for the consent agenda. Trustee Bosomworth?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Bunch?
Yes.
Trustee Culpepper?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Chambers?
Yes.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson's second. Trustee Swain?
Yes.
Trustee Tynes?
Yes.
And Trustee Wilkins made the motion. Thank.
And now we'll move on to our committee reports. The first one, which is the Committee on Academic Excellence and Strategic Growth. We approved one action item, which was Dr. Velma Blackman as Professor Emeritus. And as information, the committee received an update on the SAC COC reaffirmation process, including the compliance certification report being submitted and received by the committee members by September the eighth, two thousand and twenty. The timeline for the off-site peer review to be conducted November three through six, two thousand and twenty, and onsite visit in March of two thousand and twenty-one, which will be conducted virtually. Proverse Ward provided updates concerning fall two thousand and twenty courses, with fifty-nine percent being face-to-face and forty-one percent being totally online. Over seventy-five thousand dollars was spent on faculty resources, and an additional one hundred and seventy thousand dollars was spent on classroom technology upgrades. Academic Affairs provided faculty online training during the summer with a total of eighteen workshops with over sixty faculty participating. ECSU was granted a COVID-nineteen mitigation grant through the North Carolina Collaboratory for one million dollars. This grant will allow ECSU to conduct COVID-nineteen testing on campus and in the twenty-one county service area. Proverse Ward also shared about the collaboration with Wake Tech Community College. The partnership will center around ECSU's emergency management and unmanned aircraft system programs. Proverse Ward provided information regarding the increased enrollment and the shared, the university surpassed the year-two strategic goal. Information on the increase in retention and persistence rates, as well as an increase in graduate and transfer enrollment was also shared. An update was also provided regarding the admissions policy, which no longer requires spring two thousand and twenty-one, summer two thousand and twenty-one, and fall two thousand and twenty-one admits to have a test score on file. Admissions is conducting all recruiting efforts a hundred percent virtually during the virtual open house, which is scheduled for October third, two thousand and twenty. Lastly, information regarding the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one strategic goals for Goal One, Academic Excellence, and Goal Three, Sustainable Growth, was also provided. In closing, I'd like to publicly congratulate Dr. Ward and her staff for the wonderful work that they have done for this fall semester. It has been under very trying circumstances that they have been able to perform in this. And I think we as a board are, should let them know how incredibly proud we are of them and the work that they have done. This concludes the report for the Committee on Academic Excellence and Strategic Growth. Next, I will call on Trustee Kim Brown for the Committee on Student Excellence Report.
Good morning. During the Committee on Student Excellence meeting, we received updates from Athletic Director George Bright, Student Government Association, or New Student Government Association President Jimmy Chamber, and Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs, Gary Brown. From our Athletics Director, we were provided an overview of the Department of Athletics' progress and highlights, obviously, in such a challenging season. The hiring of new volleyball coach David Brooks and Assistant Women's Basketball Coach Ron Woodard. We were also informed that the C I double A suspended the N C double A competition for fall two thousand and twenty. That announcement, as we're aware, was made July nine, two thousand and twenty. If a move to the spring is adopted, we were informed that revised games and practice schedules will be established and that the department is looking on a tentative return-to-action plan, which promotes health and safety actions, the use of P P E, and prevention education and gradual increase of activities. Some other areas of discussion were strategic plan initiatives and how some of them had to be delayed due to COVID. The two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty academic performance and the fact that Elizabeth City State University is proud to announce it has the highest retention rate in the C I double A, which is at ninety-one point six percent, which is commendable, so kudos. Efforts to create spaces for students to deal with mental health issues and concerns. And we have secured the professional expertise of Ms. Ivy Watts to ramp up efforts to support student athletes. Our SGA President Jimmy Chambers highlighted two thousand and twenty-one goals for SGA, indicating that they are thinking outside of the box. I think he used that term several times. He shared a video in which he was encouraging students to wear masks and practice social distancing protocols. And he also dealt with up-and-coming initiatives around voter education and engagement, town hall meetings that were scheduled for September the twenty-second at five P M. and invited us to participate and join that. And then finally, the Division of Student Affairs. We were updated by Vice Chancellor Gary Brown. He provided an overview of the fall two thousand and twenty update, as well the two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one strategic plan and goals. And then he introduced us to new hires. He informed us as well that we are currently at an eighty, eighty-one percent occupancy rate, that there are social distancing and P P, P P E protocols related to housing and residence life that are being managed. Talked to us about quarantine spaces and partnerships with student health and the local health department. As well, the purchase and dissemination of self-help monitoring kits to each student and how he is, and his staff are ramping up programs and service offerings to engage students in person and virtually. He also informed us of some updates to strategic plan goals. We've received four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in successful grants and the engagement of alumni and career services. And finally, two new hires, Dr. Nicole David, Dr. Nicole Lewis, Dean of Students, and Mr. Eric Pointer, Title IX Investigator. This concludes the report of the Committee on Student Excellence.
Thank you, Trustee Brown. Now I'll call on Trustee Phyllis Bosomworth for the report on the Committee on Operational Excellence.
Good morning. The Committee on Operational Excellence acted on two items that we approved, the Rosenwald School and the Principal House renovation. The lease, the second one was the lease approval for additional space at the Elizabeth City Regional Airport to obtain a thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot modular trailer on the airport property. The committee received progress reports on the North Carolina Bonds Project of Moore Hall and G R Little Library. An update was presented on the USDA project for Bias Hall renovations and the demolition of the Hugh Cale and Dole's Hall. Information regarding the Hurricane Dorian Recovery Bill roof repair and the negotiations with the state construction was discussed. The Bedell Cafeteria Emergency Declaration completion will be complete now on December two thousand and twenty. A summary of the HUB, H U B, participation on current projects was shared, and the committee received updates on the eight-hundred-ton chiller. Dr. Wilkins discussed information technology matter and the steps that were being taken for full recovery. And an update on social media participation was discussed with the strategic plan to increase ECSU visibility that is ongoing. The Communications and Marketing Division is working with other divisions to help tell the ECSU story. This concludes the report for the Committee of Operational Excellence.
Thank you, Trustee Bosomworth. And now I'll call on Trustee Andy Culpepper for the report on the Committee of Finance Audit and University Advancement. You're on mute. Trustee Culpepper, you're on mute. Trustee Culpepper?
I got you.
Okay.
All right. Now let me find my report again. Bear with me just a little bit. All right. We met as a Committee of Finance Audit and University Advancement. During that meeting, there were two action items, the annual audit plan, which was approved, and the policy nine hundred point three, which was the policy changes on naming of university facilities and unit policy, and that was approved. Vice Chancellor Lisa McClinton gave a budget update summary to include fiscal years two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one. The two thousand and twenty, twenty-one budget update involved new COVID relief funding, Governor's Emergency Education Relief Funds, and funds for P P E. And then we had a financial outlook for fiscal year two twenty. An overview of the five-year strategic goal for budgeting plans and how to achieve the goals was also shared. Then Chief Officer Sherida Parker provided an update of the audits and the outcome included in the materials. And we had a very interesting report by Vice Chancellor Anita Walton, who provided the committee with a fundraising update and overview of advancement activities. During fiscal year twenty, close to one point six nine million, more than fifty percent over the one point one million goal. Donor participation increased among non-alumni constituents, corporations, and foundations. Overall, giving by amount increased with all constituents except organizations. This was primarily due to the cancellation of spring activities due to COVID-nineteen. The goal for fiscal year twenty-one is one point four million COVID-nineteen donor cultivation and new prospects through digital and virtual channels were considered, as well as the three-year average when finalizing the goal. The update on the status of current fundraising efforts was provided by Vice Chancellor Walton. She shared the details upcoming night, eighteen ninety-one, a strong campaign which will kick off on October first and run through October twenty-fourth. The goal is to raise support from a thousand eight hundred and ninety-one donors, contribution support, athletics, marching band scholarships, and areas of the donors choosing. An update on current actions with the strategic plan was provided. Most activity to date include, included studying baseline data, goal-setting, and developing an action plan. These are the primary efforts. Six new ECSU Foundation Board members were introduced, as well as new hires in the Division of University Advancement, which also reflected some of the infrastructure changes. This concludes the report on Finance Audit and University Advancement. This concludes the report on Finance Audit and University Advancement Committee.
Thank you, Trustee Culpepper. Now I'll call on Trustee Paul Tan for the Committee on Regional Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. During the Committee on Regional Development, we received information on the announcement of Carson Rich, Special Assistant to the Chancellor for External Affairs. He will expand his duties to serve as the liaison for community and economic engagement while continuing his work in government relations. Data was provided on the Small Business and Technology Development Centers in the areas of businesses served, business counseling hours, capital formation created, and jobs created and/or retained. Updates were presented concerning Strategic Initiative Number Six, which is to secure our position as a catalyst in regional economic, social, and environmental development and facilitate collaboration with industry and government to improve our region. The work to establish a Board of Visitors continues. Additionally, a list of community organizations that the Chancellor's Executive Cabinet serves on as members was shared. That concludes the report for the Regional Development Committee.
Thank you, Trustee Tan. Now I will present the report on University Governance. The Board members were thanked for participating in the self-assessment tool. More discussion on this assessment will be held during the Board Retreat. The Chief Human Resources Officer, Dr. Lane, was introduced to the Board members. Dr. Lane referenced the personnel information provided in the Board Materials. She also shared how Human Resources Division is supporting faculty and staff during COVID-19. The Board then moved into closed session. This concludes the report for the Committee on University Governance. At this time, I'd like to call on our wonderful Chancellor Carrie Dixon with the Chancellor's Report. Dr. Dixon.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to say, good morning, good morning, Vice Chair Bunch, the members of the E C S U Board of Trustees, and everyone who has joined us for today's virtual meeting. I want to start my report with appreciation to this board, who is absolutely outstanding, to my cabinet, our faculty, staff, and students for displaying great resilience during unprecedented times. COVID-19 and the recent cyber incident have presented opportunities for us to demonstrate the tenacity and resilience of Vikings. I appreciate the effort of the entire team in preparing the campus for our students' return to campus in August. I appreciate the great care everyone is taking to keep our campus community safe, wearing face masks, frequent hand washing, social distancing, and doing self-temperature checks prior to leaving their places of residence as a part of our safety protocol. I also commend our Division of Information Technology for their tireless efforts in restoring Blackboard and other I T services disrupted by the recent cyber incident. Although this semester has presented unprecedented challenges, great things are still happening at E C S U. Consider some of the recent newsroom headlines. U S News and World report, "The Washington Monthly Give E C S U Top Marks in Annual Ranking Publications." "E C S U Graduate Programs See Significant Enrollment Increase." "E C S U Awarded More Than Fifteen Million Dollars in Grants," which is significant for our university. "E C S U Hosts State Launch of Suicide Prevention Red Flag Project" as we continue to encourage our students through this unprecedented times. "F A A Designates E C S U as U A S C T I School of Aviation Program Enrollment Growth Continues." "E C S U Mark's Highest Enrollment Since 2014." And as Vice Chair Bunch mentioned, thank you so much to our provost, her entire team, everyone, our alumni, our Board of Trustees members, faculty, staff, students, everyone who contributed to this growth. We are grateful and we are thankful. "E C S U Awarded One-point-eight-million dollars in Grants to Aid Student Success for Income Eligible First-Generation Students." On August 26, E C S U conferred an honorary doctorate of science degree to former U N C System Interim President William Roper. With the Board of Trustees' approval, E C S U will confer an honorary doctorate of public service to Ms. Lenora Mackey at the December commencement ceremony. I am also happy to report that at the request of the Pasquotank County Board of Elections, E C S U will serve as a voting site for the general election in November. Great things are not just happening at E C S U, they are strategically happening. Robert Jordan penned in his novel, "The Fires of Heaven, 'The oak fought the wind and was broken, the willow bent when it must and survived.'" As we forge our future, we will demonstrate the strength of an oak, but when the situation demands, we will be nimble as the willow. That's the key to building a sustainable future for Elizabeth City State University. Since the COVID-19 restrictions prevented us from presenting a celebratory launch of our 2020-2025 Strategic Plan, Forging Our Future, trustees, I would like to share with you a six-minute video, which is our kickoff video to the Strategic Plan that all of you envisioned for this great university as we roadmap the future of E C S U. Thank you so much, trustees, for your leadership and your time through this process of building a strategic plan. And for this, we are grateful. And if you will, please join me at this time in watching this six-minute video to launch our Strategic Plan, Forging Our Future. Hello, I'm Carrie Dixon, Chancellor of Elizabeth City State University. I'm excited to share with you E C S U's Strategic Plan for 2020-2025, Forging Our Future. Forging Our Future focuses on how to best utilize our strengths to serve our students in providing access to a high-quality, affordable education at North Carolina's premier institution. E C S U is where leaders are created, leaders who are courageous, resilient, and empowered. Our Strategic Plan is built with integrity and compassion, supporting our students, faculty, and staff as we develop the innovators, entrepreneurs, pioneers, and creators of tomorrow. Our 2020-2025 Plan was intentionally developed with a vision for our collective future. E C S U's high-quality academic programs align with community demands, meet employer needs, enhance our region and state, as well as drive economic development to guarantee the future success and sustainability of the university. As a constituent institution of the University of North Carolina, Elizabeth City State University offers baccalaureate, professional, and master's degrees for a diverse student body. Our mission is to promote economic, social, and environmental progress for the people of northeastern North Carolina, the state, and the entire nation. Through teaching, research, and community engagement, the institution's rich heritage and its current multicultural, student-centered focus provide a firm foundation for its endeavors. It serves the needs and aspirations of individuals and society, producing graduates for leadership roles and lifelong learning. Forging Our Future is comprised of six goals with successive objectives that are the blueprint for E C S U's success over the next five years. The first goal is academic excellence. That means E C S U will provide high-quality academic programs that fully utilize our strengths as a university and enhance our region. Promoting an academic environment that is centered on student success and fosters faculty development in the areas of teaching, research, and service is our commitment. Established as a normal school for the teaching and training of teachers, E C S U will collaborate with regional K-12 education agencies to enhance preparation, quality education, to deliver best practices. As our Strategic Plan says, we are forging our future. As E C S U aligns with community demand and strives to meet the demand of employers, we will continue to expand our academic offerings, services, and expand the national prominence of our aviation program, which is the only four-year collegiate degree program available in the state of North Carolina. Goal two is student experience. Because we are invested in the future of our students, it is important that we create transformative experiences for our students that support academic outcomes and build Viking spirit. While E C S U does provide a quality education at an affordable price, students can be assured that faculty and staff are not only committed to their academic success but are passionate about creating a diverse and inclusive environment that fosters a safe and engaging environment for students to be Vikings. As Vikings, students have access to robust co-curricular and extracurricular campus activities, enhanced living experiences, competitive athletic programs that develop student athletes into well-rounded leaders, and our unique culture of Viking spirit and Viking pride. Goal three is sustainable growth. By improving our enrollment process and investments in recruitment, retention, and completion efforts, we are maximizing our potential for sustainable growth in new student population, graduation rates, and overall management practices. Goal four is institutional advancement. As we promote and progress the institution through the engagement of our students, alumni, and other stakeholders, we must engage those constituent groups in ways that are meaningful and strategic. That includes implementing an effective marketing and communication plan, increasing visibility, cultivating a campus-wide culture of service and giving to the university, and prioritizing engagement with the community and the region. Goal five is operational excellence. E C S U will ensure sound and efficient operations and enhance our customer service quality and delivery through improved technology and business efficiencies, exceptional campus-wide customer service, and the recruitment and retention of talented faculty, staff, and administrators. The sixth and final goal is regional development. As an institution servicing twenty-one counties, it is imperative that we secure our position as a catalyst of regional economic, social, and environmental development. In doing so, we will facilitate collaboration with industry and government agencies to improve our region. In every way, E C S U is passionate and intentional about the success of its students. Guided by a group of core values, the university strives to demonstrate and maintain an incomparable level of accountability, commitment, excellence, collaboration, and inclusion. Viking pride is not just about the institution, it is about the people. People who serve humanity with a passion for lifelong learning and strive for excellence as the standard. We are a proud family, one built on the strength of our forefathers. Together, we will continue our legacy of success. Together, we are forging our future. So again, trustees and those joining us today, I hope you enjoyed our kickoff video. Hope you were pleased with that. I have to give credit to our communication and marketing team for their vision and pulling that together. And you were the first to see it, everyone on this, on this meeting today. And after this meeting, it will be uploaded on our social media channels. And we will send a link out to the trustees to be able to share it with anyone that you're interested in sharing it with. So I thank you, trustees, for your continued support and dedication, your commitment to this great institution. All of you are a huge value to the vision, the roadmap that we created together as we continue to forge our future and sustaining our great University of Elizabeth City State University. For the remaining time, I would like to show you a few things that are happening on campus in regards to our projects. And just a few pictures, I want to give you some context of some other things that we're doing. So we're waiting for the PowerPoint to come up. Okay, thank you, Carson. Okay, so we are still in progress, and so we still have our signs up. Please pardon our progress. This is a good thing for the university. We've received such significant feedback from the campus community, as well as our community surrounding E C S U, on how wonderful our campus looks. And if you can hear in the background, I hear the, the facilities folks out there cutting the grass. I don't know if you can hear that, but everyone's committed to making sure that our campus is beautiful. So we have decided to close the entrance that some of you may be accustomed to entering into the campus. This is the entrance that's by the, the sign there that says, "The Home of the Mighty Vikings." This is a new gate. It's an automatic gate where, you know, if we need emergency management people to come in, they will be able to come in, but it cuts off traffic flow into this entrance and really pushes everyone to the main entrance of the campus. Because the main entrance of the campus is so beautiful, and we want everyone to see our huge arch there that introduces you to Elizabeth City State University. Another reason we decided to put this gate here is because we have had some issues in the past where there have been car accidents and other types of accidents, and even, you know, some, some very, very detrimental things that have happened there to some people who have tried to cross the street. And so there, we will cut off flow, and this gate there will provide us a reason to, a way to do that. On the back of campus, you'll also see the automatic gates there, and those gates close at between five and six o'clock each day. And that also will push people to the main entrance. From the standpoint of safety, for the standpoint of just understanding who's on our campus after hours, this will allow our public, our campus police to really monitor that much closely. Next slide. And here on the back of campus, we've put forth an effort to make the back of campus look just as nice as the front. So you can see the before and after results there, introducing people to our campus from the backside, the Parkview Road side of campus. So what we did was replace the signage there to bring more of a welcoming, you know, feel to the campus, even if you enter in through the back and not the front during the, during the hours of eight to five. Here's some other signage. If you recall, over by the Fine Arts, the Mickey Burnham Fine Arts Center, there was a sign very similar to this one, but it was laid down in the grass, so it was much harder to see from the road. So what we did was raise that Viking pride signage so that everyone understands as they enter our campus, go to the Fine Arts Building, that this is a culture of Viking pride. So we wanted that to be more prominent and more visible. Here you see the trustees did approve the proposal to demolish the house that sat in front of campus by the gate. And the, and so that house, that structure is no longer there. It has been flattened out, that area, so we'll make sure that that actually looks good and is becoming to the campus as well. Here's a before picture of, of- Here's a before picture of the provost's office. You can see kind of how the wear and tear on the carpet, the walls and everything. And so with academic affairs being our core, we wanted to make sure as students, prospective students, parents visit the academic affairs division, that they are pleasantly greeted by a more visible Viking pride feeling. And here's the end result. So you see the before and after and what a difference new carpet and paint really makes. So we talked about the campaign for reimagining Robuck. Well, this is what our football field looked like, the before picture, before we raised funds. And thank you all who contributed to the campaign and donating funds towards this effort. We're not done yet. This is still in place, but this is how our field looks now. And to date, it looks great. It's going to be ready for our season to start up, whether that's in the spring or whenever that may be. And so we're very pleased with the results and we're still working to make sure that our football field, as well as our Robuck Stadium in general, looks its best for our student athletes and our community. So here is Hugh Killen Dole, the buildings that were also on the list for being demolished and mainly because they are unoccupiable, they were unoccupiable and not safe to go into. And so this is what it looked like before. This is what it looks like now and they're still working on demolishing a small bit of it. But this is also where we have designated our new library. If we're able to receive the capital funding to build a new library, this is where the new library will sit. And then our old student center, the backside of that, we wanted to make sure that the steps were solid in place. The foundation was good for our visitors and guests and our students. And so this is the before picture. And this is what it looks like now. So it has definitely a better structure, more solid, and just looks better than it did before. And it allows us to have even more room for traffic to go in and out of that building. And Lane Hall, our signature Lane Hall, which is a part of our logo for ECSU. This is the building that's on the logo. We wanted to make it look much better visibly on the backside of campus. So this is the before picture. And this is what Lane Hall looks like now from the front of Lane Hall. And this is all on the back of campus. So our efforts here is to make sure that we are giving the same TLC to the back of campus as we're giving to the front, because first impressions mean everything. And for our students, our faculty, our alumni, our staff, everyone who comes to our campus, we want them to know that we value our campus, we want our campus to look nice, we want everyone to enjoy their time there. And so with first impressions meaning everything, we also have to give our buildings a lot of TLC to make sure that we're taking care of them and we're presenting them to the best of our ability. And so I thank our facility staff, I thank VC Goodson, Alan Goodson, and his team for the hourless days and efforts in making sure that we're doing all we can to have our campus look as best as it can. And so we're very proud of this. Work will continue and we will continue our efforts. So this is just a, just a small piece of what you will see, but more to come as we continue to look at our campus and make it even nicer than it is now. So I thank you all for your support of ECSU and we will continue to navigate these waters together and thank you all for being on board with that.
Thank you, Chancellor. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, if not, then I'll call on trustee Johnson for our motion to go into closed session.
I move that we go into closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318 dot 11 to consider and discuss a confidential personal matter and subsection A1 to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this, to the law, sorry, to the law of this state of the United States or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes and subsequent A3 to consult with our attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and Elizabeth City State University.
Hey, do I have a second?
This is Paul Tine, second.
Okay, roll call to approve the motion. Ms. Sanders? One moment. Roll call to approve the motion to go into closed session. Trustees Bosnward?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Bunch?
Yes.
Trustee Culpepper?
Yes. I'm good, man. I got, I got to get off the phone.
Trustee Chambers? Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson made the motion. Trustee Robinson? Trustee Robinson?
Yes, yes.
Trustee Swain?
Yes.
And trustee Tine, I believe, offered the second. And trustee Wilkins?
Yes.
Okay.
We are live.
Okay, thank you. I have just a couple of announcements. Once again, I want to thank trustee Stephanie Johnson for her service to the ECSU Foundation Board. And also want to thank Chris Evans for her willingness to replace trustee Johnson on the ECSU Foundation Board. This is an important appointment for us because as you know, that's one of the things we're looking at doing and that is improving the relationship between the ECSU Board of Trustees, the Foundation Board, and the Alumni Board. So thank you both for your service and for your future service. Also wanted to remind all the trustees that on November the 11th, we will be having a board retreat. Please put that date on your calendar. We have many important things to discuss. And Ms. Sanders will be in touch with us at a later date to set this up.
Yes.
Okay, and if there are no other comments, then we stand adjourned without objection.